Should be turned off, especially on the silent mode. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council on Monday, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, and on the meeting of order at four P M. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Two additions tonight, Your Worship, for under seven A council reports. We're going to have a recap of the Roma Conference. And under nine B, there'll be a verbal report on the Housing Accelerator Fund Agreement.
Thank you. So I have a motion that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of council as circulated or amended. Move by. And seconded by Council Wheeler. Are there any questions regarding the agenda? None, all in favor? Any disclosures of interest? None. Have a motion to approve the previous minutes that council hereby adopts the minutes as regular meeting of council and close meeting of council held on Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty four, and the special meeting of council held on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, as circulated as amended. Move by. Council Lake, seconded by Council Wheeler.
Have a question in favor, Your Worship?
Sorry?
All in favor?
All in favor? Good, thank you. Alrighty, so we have a delegation here. Let's introduce and welcome Gabby Soraro and Miley Anthony. We are done, will... Any questions before then? Welcome ladies.
And Your Worship, if I might do an introduction, please. So we asked the two members of our leadership class from Marathon High School to come, I think. Everybody always says this new generation doesn't volunteer, they don't... They're stuck on their phones. Gabby's got her phone. But the fact of the matter is, these are two young students, two young Falcons who were working with Amanda Seacord, who couldn't be here. The child and youth worker really wanted to start a thrift store at Marathon High School for the reasons that they'll talk about, and I just think it's really kind of worth celebrating that, you know, what we have here are two young leaders who actually took an initiative on themselves. So Gabby Soraro is in grade eleven, Miley Anthony in grade ten, and we're certainly very happy to have them representing the Falcons today.
Great, thank you for the introductions. Ladies, what was yours?
Yeah, so we're here today to talk about our new project for Marathon High School. It's called Falcons Fashion. So Falcons Fashion is a thrift store for students to buy clothing along with other miscellaneous items in our high school. Miley and I, along with the help of Amanda Seacord, the child and youth worker at our high school, and our teacher, Miss Stilley, created this idea in our leadership class. Me and Miley wanted to create a space for students to feel comfortable to buy not expensive clothing compared to the fashion stores these days. Yeah, so one of the main, like, big issues that we saw with kids buying clothes nowadays is fast fashion. So fast fashion is an issue where lots of companies will make clothes very quickly, don't put any care into it, and just sell it to keep up with trends that lots of teenagers will keep up with. And so that contributes to a whole bunch of environmental problems. So we felt that thrift stores would be a great way to reduce the number of pollution with those clothes. So right now, we're planning on being opened twice a month during lunch hour in a room within our high school, and to make this possible, we need help from our community.
As of right now, our biggest concern is getting donations. That is of interest of younger audience. And me and Miley both know that we have way too many clothes, and we only really wear half of them. So we request that students, along with the help of parents, can donate some of their clothes to our thrift store. There is a big yellow bin in the office at our school where you can drop your clothes in the shipping box.
Yeah, so we accept all articles of clothing, as well as shoes, underwear, like hats, mits, and scarves, school supplies, jewelry, and anything else that you do useful for students to use.
We're hopeful that this is a long-term success in our high school and impactful to the students of our school.
Yeah, I think that's everything.
Good, great, thank you both so very much for coming. I very much appreciate it. I'll invite any council members that have any questions first.
More of a comment, just a great presentation, ladies, and it's great to see you being leaders in your school, and it's a great initiative, and hopefully everything goes great and continues into the future.
Thank you.
Council Lake.
I also do, just the other day, we found out that the thrift, or us, the thrift store over by Trinity Collective is going to allow these two to go in tomorrow afternoon, actually, and sort of pick through what they have and take what they think teenagers might like, and they said that we could do that for free to help stock, stock the store, which is great. I thought they'd ask me because of my fashion sense, but apparently they want Gabby and Miley instead, whatever. So that was a great partnership that I think has emerged as well.
Mayor Department, Mayor DeWes?
Yeah, thanks for that, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank the young ladies, as well as Council Lake for putting a program together. And my question was going to be part and parcel of what Council Lake just mentioned about the fact that any unused product, clothes, will still continue to provide services for the local thrift store, as well as profit and offsetting their expenses, so that's great. And, you know, great to see young people getting involved and taking action in our community. We need more of that, so hats off to you, to young ladies, and keep up the good work. I really appreciate it. Just want to quick wave over to Al Cresswell, who's in the audience there. Hi, Al.
I just have one quick question, I apologize to be mentioning, so are you just targeting the grade nine to grade twelve age?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think You Worship will lead off for us, you know, if the mayor's probably can assist in any way, certainly with, you know, messaging or media, then by all means, you know, through Council Lake, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Awesome. We do have a, maybe give your... I know the mayor loves his social media, do you want to give him your address for Falcons?
Yeah, we do have a Instagram account. It's, I'm going to say the username?
Yeah.
Okay. Underscore Falcons Fashion, underscore.
Thank you both so much, we can get that word out there, and Mr. Skorchinsky's schedule, support in any way that we can.
Thank you, it's great.
Thank you both so much.
Thanks, bye.
Alrighty, so moving on to some unfinished business. We have a discussion requiring regarding the twenty twenty four rings management tipping fees. Mr. Skorchinsky.
Yeah, so again, Mr. Virbo, to highlight the financial piece, but a council recalls, one of the items that we deferred when we passed the fees and charges for twenty twenty four back in December was waste management and the tipping fees around that. We want to do a little more legwork on our end to make sure that we are comfortable in bringing a recommendation forward. So what council is going to see today is we're recommending that we hold the line on bag tags at two dollars and fifty cents, but we do increase nominally some fees at the actual weigh scale itself. So I'll ask Mr. Virbo to highlight those for council.
So the first one is the tipping fee. Currently, we charge ninety six dollars per metric ton. We're proposing that council accept a hundred and twenty five dollar per ton. Right now, we charge a hundred and forty four dollars per ton for any waste that's transferred from outside the area indicated on our environmental compliance approval. We're proposing the same percentage increase to a hundred and eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. We're proposing a new fee for non-hazardous contaminated soil at fifty dollars a metric ton. Another change is to have the minimum fee for tipping going from five tags to six tags. So going from twelve fifty to, because the bag tags will stay the same, from twelve fifty to fifteen dollars equivalent. And we're proposing that the changes be effective on March first so that we could notify our commercial users like those waste that, so they can notify their customers and give them enough lead time so that they can produce the amount of garbage they produce and hopefully divert more to recycling.
And You Worship, I could just highlight a little further, you know, some of our administration's reasoning behind the weigh scale. Ultimately, you know, we pay for curbside pickup, or that's what we encourage, that's what we want. So, you know, less traffic at, you know, the landfill site itself is more beneficial, so hence why holding the line on the bag tags at two fifty, but increasing the minimum at the weigh scale. Because what we see obviously is, you know, lots of pickup in town, lots of drop off. You know, if you go to the landfill site on a Saturday, it's a busy place. You know, so we're subsidizing curbside pickup through our taxation. That's what we're encouraging, so again, holding the line on the bag tags at two fifty, but a little more at the weigh scale, you know, nominally at one more tag.
Perfect, any comments?
The mayor has his name?
Thanks for that, and I appreciate that, Council Suki. The reality is that, you know, we've always been encouraging people to utilize the curbside because we have staff doing that service at all the time. So I don't want to see people going over the weigh scale, and I appreciate your re-changing of the system, and I fully support that. What I would encourage administration to look with council's blessing is to give the little bit more lead time to the more commercial guys, because if they're going to pass on that charge to their customer, maybe they need a little bit more lead time, so now we're talking, it's the first of February, by the time this gets to them, one month. I'm just asking for a little more lead time, because we know there's going to be some change in the recycling program and the structures there, so maybe a couple months rather than just March. So maybe that gives them an opportunity to send their customers by, if there's any increases coming to them from the contractor. That's all I'm asking.
The meeting, are we showing our end of council's direction on that?
Any further questions, comments? Maybe just, so, again, if you're, I mean, most residents, you know, you collect your garbage, put a bag on it, put it at the curb. For those residents, there's no change for two thousand and four.
Correct.
It's only if you want to bring your garbage to the landfill for the minimum charge, right? So if you, you know, obviously it's based on tonnage, so, you know, if you had a full load at the back of your truck, you're not going to be at the minimum. But if you brought two bags of garbage in the back of your truck instead of using curbside, you're going to pay six tags in two thousand and twenty four, not five, okay? So...
That makes sense. Perfect. Alright, next, we have the council's orders.
So, excuse me, Council Suki, so I didn't hear a response in regards to lead time for the contractor.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I said absolutely, well...
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't hear that, but I appreciate that, thank you.
So Yours should be, should be a motion in front of you, or two bills? And then we'll just make, what does the date say in the bylaw? March first to April first? So we'll just make a friendly amendment, but we'll move that to April the first.
Good, thank you.
Alright, so kind of mixed our order on that, but we'll put the motion forward here that council hereby accepts the tax report on waste management tipping, twenty twenty four fees, and that council approves the new fees for waste management tipping in the twenty twenty four fees that charges by law. And further that the bylaw amending the twenty twenty four fees and charges will be brought later in the meeting. Move by. Seconded?
All in favor?
All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have a council report on Roma. Recently, Mrs. Skorchinsky, Council Wheeler, and Mayor DeWes were down in Toronto, representing the town of Marathon there.
He's frozen. He's just very still.
Maybe we'll start with Council Wheeler here.
I can give my Roma update first. So first, before the actual conference started, we had a Roma Zone meeting. It's always good to meet up with the other people in our area, see that most municipalities on the North Shore and Northwest Ontario all have the same issues. We had some good discussions about the Northern travel grants and the needs for updating. More good discussions about healthcare recruitment in the North and the strength of the nurse practitioner programs and how that needs to be built on even more in Northwest Ontario. The keynote speaker for the Roma Conference was Shane Felgen. He talked about his world travels and how to use, how he uses that to build stronger communities and how looking at other communities and cultures around the world can using those best practices within our own communities. There was lots of good presentations at Roma, a lot about food security and insecurity. That's kind of one of the buzzwords in Ontario politics now, and making sure everybody has good access to healthy foods that are grown here in Ontario, as well as the impact that climate change is having, as we can all see with the weather we're having right now. But one positive is, is that it's actually opening up more opportunities for growing food here in Northern Ontario. So that's something that Roma is actually looking at pretty closely. One, I also attended a session about the voluntary mergers of health units. I'm on the Thunder Bay District of Canadian Health, and we're exploring the possibilities of a merger with the Northwest Unit. Got to speak and hear from some of the members of the Northwest Unit, and they actually have the same concerns as we do in Thunder Bay about merging, so it was good to hear that they're also pushing back on the Ministry of Health against a merger. Seen, attended another session about economic development and the importance of having a MAT tax like Marathon has and using this to build tourism and development within the community. That presentation actually had a speaker from the Tours of Thunder Bay and talking about the impacts that cruise ships have had on economic development in Thunder Bay, and it was actually very informative, because hopefully that's something that we could do in the future here in Marathon. It'd be awesome to be able to see cruise ships docked in our harbor. One of the last presentations I seen was from Merrick Styles, the leader of the NDP in Ontario. She brought up some good concerns about the roads, something that we've all been talking about lately, about dangers of the accidents on our northern rivers. And she also spoke about the troubles our neighbors in Terrace Bay are having, about their mill closures, and that's something that obviously marathons went through, and we don't want to see that happen in any community.
Alright, thank you, Council Wheeler, Mayor DeWes, and Nick Dadd.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that, Council Suki. I think I froze, or you guys froze, but it looks funny when people freeze. It's the expressions on our face, and I'm sure I look just as silly as everybody else who froze today, but it's all good. So, so, it was great. Roma and I thank Council Wheeler and Mrs. Skorchinsky for attending on behalf of the municipality. And again, you know, it's one of those things where you bring to government the arguments as many as you could possibly imagine. Communities are thinking about and arguing about the same issues, but yet we need to have our voice heard. This show is unique because Roma was changed up, and in our own case, Marathon, we got canceled by a couple ministers, and then we did meet with ministers parliamentary assistants. So it was a bit of a change of structure, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure our argument was heard clearly from the government's point of view. So we did have an opportunity to meet with Minister of Northern Development, Mines, P A, Kevin Holland, and talk about our reactive living center, of course, as well as our port and the importance of our community and our relationship with BN. So we felt very confident coming out of that, that Kevin's going to work with us, and he's also set up a meeting that was canceled to meet with Minister of Infrastructure to talk about the infrastructure needs of the community going forward with the Minister of Infrastructure, but it's going to be a meeting in February. We did also have an opportunity to meet with the P A for transport, sorry, energy, and we made it very clear, the argument around round three for the infrastructure funding for the LNG project, our compressed natural gas, and we still believe there's a viable opportunity for all of our communities to benefit from that. The meeting with Minister of Finance to talk about mining taxation was canceled, so from Marathon's point of view, was a great opportunity to bring the argument forward, but frustrating as it was to have a couple of meetings canceled but be rescheduled. So we're looking forward to those discussions, so we'll see what comes out of that. But the meetings we had were positive, and I think the community's going in the right direction. Of course, I also sit on Noma Board as representative of Marathon on the Northwest Committee. Noma had money, it was a very frustrating conference for us as well, because we had all our meetings separated. We were running around all the three days trying to get all the meetings in place, but we did have meetings, and the key meetings were simply, again, on transportation, as Council Wheeler just mentioned. Now, just alone in December of two thousand and twenty three, there were so many deaths on our highways in Ontario, Northern Ontario, sorry. There was, from November the sixteenth through to the end of December, two thousand and twenty three, there was eleven deaths on our highways, and that's unacceptable. And those were all caused by either fatigue or inexperience driving or speed. All those things weigh in, we know accidents happen because of silliness, but we made that very clear to not only the government, but of course, to the Liberal Party and the NDP party we met with. So those were major issues around that. The big one for us obviously was homelessness, mental health, and addictions. We all talked about that, we made that very clear to the government. We met with NASDA, the Northern Ontario Service Deliveries Agency, out of the North, the Northeast, as well as PHNOM, to bring those points and solutions forward and have government hear us in regards to those things as well, and more funding for long-term care. We shouldn't be the care provider of any type of medical or health aspects within our, in the Northwest, Northeast, or the province of Ontario. The governor of Ontario should be the person funding all those. And of course, another big thing for us was continuation of the agency nursing and recruitment of physicians and docs in Northwest or Northern Ontario. So government heard us, I think, but again, I've said this a thousand times over, what is the results going to be, and we ask for those things to be clarified. We did have a great meeting on my AMO board meeting, so that was it for Noma, sorry. I attended AMO board meetings on Thursday, Fridays, while Toronto, and the Minister of National Housing, Minister Calander, came and talked to us directly. And he was very front-forward speaking and talked about how his government is there to assist us and try to get action done, and we asked for those actions to be considered in all aspects. So we'll see what comes out of that, so it was really good, refreshing for us to hear from him around that. But the AMO board meeting was around the literally same things that Noma talked about, but on a bigger scale. That's affecting all of us, and of course, Roma is a rural Ontario Municipal Association, which represents all of us rural, small, northern, eastern, southern communities in Ontario that are impacted by the people who live in our community, the healthcare aspects, the roads, the transportation corridors, all the various things. It just keeps plugging at the message, and we can, we'll sometimes make progress, and government says they're here listening to us, so we heard from the premier. He said, "Cody, we're hearing from you, we want to make sure things that are working and work better for the North, the Northeast, and everybody in Ontario." So a key aspect we left that meeting with, with our discussion around with that ministers, was immigration is a very important part of the province of Ontario. It's growing dramatically, but the problem is, the majority of immigration is going to the hub, the GT area. We need to have some sort of controls or ideals of how to move people throughout the province of Ontario rather than just in the one hub. So overall, it was a good conference, and I thank both Council Wheeler and Council CEO, Mr. Skorchinsky, for participating.
Thank you, Mayor DeWes. Mr. Skorchinsky, Nick Dadd?
Yeah, one of the meetings that the mayor missed was, we did have an opportunity to visit with Gen PGM and talk about the Marathon project. So spent a fair part of an hour with that group to get an update on the project, and, you know, they're very much moving forward with the project plans. You know, we're working on the CapEx, given the prices of palladium, platinum, and copper. But that was a positive meeting, and hopefully we hear progress on that project in the near future. And then, you know, one other session that I attended that I guess, you know, is getting a bit scary was, you know, workforce development around senior municipal administration and some of the gaps that are starting to occur across Canada with respect to the inability to fill those senior positions. And, you know, I'd say I'm closer to fifty than I am forty now, so, you know, I start to see that. But really, you know, some of the alarming trends, you know, really revolve around, you know, number one, you know, social media and instability in society now. You know, and some of the things that senior administrators, you know, have to deal with on a more regular, almost daily basis. And then, you know, increased workload having to deal with provincial or federal issues, right? Housing is a good example, right? Housing is not a municipal responsibility, it's provincial responsibility that gets downwrought, you know, just like mental health. Right, so, you know, it was a really interesting session, and I think it was, you know, it's really eye-opening. You know, and I think, you know, there's a, you know, I belong to a group, the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators, who are either taking some work around strategy and trying to come up with new messaging to encourage, you know, those graduating from post-secondary, you know, to enter, you know, municipal administration as a career. So, you know, something to be mindful of, I think, you know, and we talk about it yearly with our succession planning. You know, and I think we're in fairly good shape as we have a younger workforce, but certainly some of our senior administrators are getting closer to retirement. So it was a really good session, and, you know, something to be mindful of.
Council Lake?
Well, I just wonder, and maybe I put you on the spot there, Council Redden, but in all of your high school career, has anybody said, "Hey, you know what a good job would be?" Is municipal, like, I don't know if we're doing a good job letting young people know about municipal administration or those careers. So I just, has that been something anybody's ever talked to you?
I mean, it kind of varies person to person. People that I associate with, they're more interested in kind of mining and the trades, so they kind of focus around jobs around that. So I couldn't give best information on that, but I'd say it definitely needs to be talked about more and brought to people's awareness.
I just wondered, I remember years ago, we used to be able to go, before COVID, we would go in and even usually the mayor would go in and talk to some of our high school students. I don't know if we can, not busy enough, but certainly maybe even working with our careers teacher. Because I think it is a great career, right? If you live in your hometown, you don't have to travel, to mine every day, it's really good.
Yeah, I think there's lots of, you know, it is a good career, you know, there's lots of opportunity. It's like anything else, that, you know, the higher you advance through, you know, through the ranks, the, you know, the more things you're going to deal with on a daily basis that are unpleasant. But, you know, there's a breadth of careers in municipal administration. So I think, you know, that's something that, so, you know, we could certainly reach out and look up.
Is the career path still part of the curriculum there?
Grade ten, young man.
Okay. And does it go into, like, you know, career paths and whatnot? That's how I chose my career, like, when I, and part of that course was to interview somebody in that position at the time I reached out to Carney Killian, I can't remember his first name, he was a chiropractor, yeah. And then goes down that path, right? So, you know, if you consider a town administration job or municipal administration, interview Mr. Skorchinsky or Mr. Virbo, Mr. Child, right? See if that job will...
Okay, I can bring that back to the screen.
I think the mayor has a comment, right? Mayor DeWes?
Yeah, thanks for that, and, you know, I just look at Council Redden and of course, Council Khrushchev in regards to the community aspects. So when we brought this to AMO, and I did a presentation, probably two eighteen, around student engagement, we are still the leaders in the province. Some municipalities tried it, but the majority don't, and they don't put the effort in. Council Lake, you're absolutely right, we used to go pre-COVID and talk to the grade ten civics class about governance, governance model, what the impacts are for government and the community. So I've just been appointed as an intern guidance and mentor for, we have three interns right now with AMO Board, and so they picked me as a guidance and a mentor for this student, who's a, I mean, much more educated man than I will ever be, but he does know much about governance and the involvement with people, so my role is to teach him and work through him with that over the next several months. But the reality is, is that students are going into government, government, and, you know, issues and within schooling and training, but not having the experience. So with us having our high school students on our council, they might never go into the governance or governance model or get into politics, but the reality is they have a taste for it, and they understand how it works, and then that's the best part of training and talking about it, because I can certainly, you know, I can attest to what Council Redden, as mates, talk about, but the reality is, the more that he sits in our council, I'm sure the more opportunity from his conversation with peers comes up about some governance issues and how, you know, fees are paid and how you pay for garbage, and those things probably come up that they would never have come up in their conversations if they weren't sitting at our table. So it's all great to have the people in our community involved and the youth involved, and key spreading the message.
Thank you for that. Alright, anything else, Dan? Alright, moving on, next we have our student counselors. Council Khrushchev is not with us today, we have Council Reddick.
So right now, in Marathon High School, the Falcons are on day two of exams, so we're wrapping up a very successful semester, and we're very hopeful for a semester two with leadership opportunities and also our sports finalizing, the semi-finals coming to our school.
Perfect. An exam tomorrow?
I do, yes.
Alright. Good luck. Alright, next we have a C A O report, a report on municipal accommodation tax increase according to all members. Mrs. Skorchinsky?
Yeah, so under the Municipal Act, the municipality is authorized to establish and collect the municipal accommodation tax. The tax is charged on the cost of fixed...
Uh the tax is charged on the cost of fixed roof transit accommodations sold for a continuous period of less than thirty days within the boundaries of a municipality. Tax applies to all accommodations sold, uh which includes hotel, motel, lodge and hostel, bed and breakfast, dwelling unit or any place an accommodation is provided. The town of Marathon implemented its MAT tax in January two thousand nineteen. Uh as per Ontario regulation, after adjusting for the municipality's reasonable cost of collecting and administering the tax, a revenue sharing formula must be utilized. If the destination marketing program does not exist in a municipality, Marathon does not have one, then for each full or partial fiscal year, fifty percent of revenue generated must be paid to eligible tourism entities, uh not-for-profit organizations for the exclusive purpose of marketing tourism. The other fifty percent of revenue could be allocated to municipal priorities such as municipal recreation and infrastructure. Administration has had the legal council validate this use for us. Uh financially, the MAT at a rate of four percent, what we currently charge, uh generates a hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue annually for the municipality. Administration is recommending that this rate be increased to six percent, which will generate approximately two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars annually. Administration is recommending that fifty percent of the MAT going on a go-forward basis be allocated to the development of the Active Living Centre. Administration notes that the MAT is collected from the traveling public and not local establishments. It is not an additional tax charged to local bricks and mortar businesses. Uh options for council, approve the municipal tax, municipal accommodation tax increase as presented, uh be six percent or do not approve the tax. The administration recommends that option A be selected and that the municipal accommodation tax uh increase be implemented uh on March the first. Uh in the original report, we said February the first. Um but we're going to make it, we want to make it effective March the first. Uh reporting for the MAT taxes quarterly, that will make it easier uh for transition for our local accommodation providers. Uh and that bylaw number twenty seventy-two be adopted later in the meeting.
Perfect. Uh thank you, Mr. Skidzki. Uh we have a motion here that council hereby accepts the tax report and recommendation on municipal accommodation tax increase. And further that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in the meeting, implementing the municipal accommodation tax increase effective February first, two thousand twenty-four. Move by. Councillor Blake? Any questions? Yeah, I I do think it's a a good thing to increase the tax. Anybody, I mean, we live in a municipality where if you have to go to a major hospital or have to go for a test, you're staying in a hotel in Thunder Bay, where you're paying the MAT to Thunder Bay. Um so I think it's a it's it's nice to have a tax revenue of people who are coming into your municipality, not your residents. And I think uh because of where we live, I think in general, we pay more MAT tax probably as we travel than anybody else in Ontario, because you have to leave this community. So I'm happy to uh return the favor in the sense of uh take some of that.
Councillor Wheeler?
Uh thank you, Worship. Uh Mr. Skidzki, is there a system? I know short-term rentals are supposed to pay, but is there like Airbnb, Verbo, like are we getting some, anything from those?
I would say, you know, yes and no. So I would say we have some that definitely report and some that definitely don't. Um we are definitely going to be taking a more straightforward approach in twenty twenty-four and identifying and updating our bylaw. Uh and the main reason is we we have a full-time bylaw officer now. All right. So you know, traditionally, this was a a difficult one to capture in the past with these disruptive technologies. Um but now, you know, there there are bylaws uh out there. We have some really good case examples in Ontario. Um so obviously, we'll start with education, but we will be looking to implement this uh in twenty twenty-four. Um you know, uh because it does make a difference in terms of now taxation revenue.
Just to follow up on councillor Wheeler's comment, that would not capture short-term rentals, or would it? Say I own a second house, I'm renting it to XYZ for fifteen hundred dollars a month. Would it capture that as well?
Anything less than thirty days.
I think less than thirty days, okay.
Is 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 the regulation in Ontario.
It's a communication piece, yeah.
So you know, you can't always capture, right? You know, it's not like you can, you know, go door to door and you're renting out your house, right? But I think, you know, what we're learning from some other municipalities is there's different reporting structures we can implement.
Yeah.
Um that will help identify some of those properties.
Excellent. Mayor Dumas, you think that?
No, I'm I'm simply staying in an Airbnb right now and the the homeowner is identified right on the bill that I'm paying because they're registered with Airbnb. So it's registered on the bill what I pay. I'm not paying a MAT tax where I'm at, but the reality is I pay all the taxes, everything is the fees. So it's no different with with Mr. Skidzki, just said our bylaw will work with the people who are renting for those short-term rentals and we'll have the the revenue coming through the municipality.
I said that on paper, okay? On paper.
Yeah.
All right. Next, uh this uh IB Housing Accelerator, Mr. Skidzki?
Yeah, so this is, uh there's no report for this. Uh it's just a a verbal report looking for a motion of council um with respect to we were recently approved, the first community in northern Ontario for the Housing Accelerator Fund through the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation. Um we need to pass a motion uh to approve mayor and council to enter into the agreement. Uh once we do that, um then public details of the agreement can be shared. Administration, you know, and our legal counsel have reviewed the document. We have no issues. Um but CMHC wants to make the announcement in short order and get the money flowing to us. So uh today, we're just looking for council to approve the mayor and clerk entering into the agreement. Uh and at such time the announcement is made, then we can make the agreement public.
All right. So we have a motion here that councillor hereby accepts the recommendation on the Towns Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation Housing Accelerator Fund project submission. And further that councillor hereby authorizes the mayor and the clerk to sign the contribution agreement on behalf of the municipality. All good? All right. Next, we have administration reports. We have a report on the twenty twenty-four interim tax levy. Mr. Virbo?
Just an uh further clarification on MAT tax and short-term rentals. Our clerical staff do go on Airbnb and Verbo and do Marathon and find that too, so we don't go and send the police or whatever, but I took some persuasion to get most of those uh places to charge the MAT tax and lend it to us. So my next two reports are just housekeeping. It's just having to do these bylaws annually to get coun- or to confirm councils' direction on how to do this. So the twenty twenty-four interim tax levy is based on section three seventeen of the Municipal Act, and it allows the municipality to impose an interim tax levy prior to the adoption of the year for the current year. This levy facilitates the financing of operations and eliminates or reduces the need to borrow. The Act limits the amount of tax levied on any property to fifty percent of the total amount levied on the property in the previous year. Point two and three of the bylaw just describes how properties that have had their assessment changed are to be taxed with fifty percent of the twenty twenty-three tax rate of the applicable tax class will be applied to the property assessment uh I'm sorry, property assessed value. The amount levied may be less than fifty percent of the prior year levy and may be a different percentage for each property class. The Act also impowers the ministry to prescribe the percentage to be imposed. In all prior years, Marathon has imposed an interim tax levy at the maximum rate permitted typically the due dates are between February and April. Bylaw two thousand sixty-eight provides for a due date on or before March thirty-first of this year. Approved by law two thousand sixty-eight will authorize administration to levy the interim taxes in order to perform, sorry, in order to provide adequate cash flow for the operating and capital expenditures. The levy will produce approximately two and a half million dollars in revenue. Administration recommends that the bylaw be approved, authorizing. Administration should issue the interim levy for two thousand and point four.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Virbo. Uh I have a motion here that councillor hereby accepts the tax report and recommendation on twenty twenty-four interim tax levy. And further that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in the meeting, authorizing administration to issue the twenty twenty-four interim tax levy. Move by. Any questions? All in favor? All right. Next, we have a report on twenty twenty-four water and sewer building. Mr. Virbo?
At the regular meeting of council held on December eighteenth of last year, council passed bylaw two thousand sixty-five, which authorized the establishment of water and sewer fees and charges for the town of Marathon in twenty twenty-four. Council agreed to increase the sewer surcharge from forty-nine point two percent to fifty-three point nine seven percent of the water rate. This equates to an increase of three point one nine percent. As a housekeeping item, council must pass a bylaw to provide for the billing and collection of water and sewer charges for twenty twenty-four. Administration recommends a bylaw two thousand sixty-nine be approved to provide for the billing and collection of the twenty twenty-four water and sewer charges.
Thank you. Uh so I have a motion here that councillor hereby accepts the tax report and recommendation on twenty twenty-four water and sewer building. And further that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in the meeting to provide for the billing and collection of the twenty twenty-four water and sewer charges. Move by. Second. And all in favor?
All right.
All right. Here. We have a report on Barrick-Hemble fire protection agreement.
Um the only thing that really changed from the last one was it had us listed as spending four days together training and according uh people up there said that that was never happening. So we cut it back to one. See if we can manage to get one. A day. And then the rest of it is all the same as it was before.
Go through the entire, be good?
Well, it's probably good to go. Is that pretty, I don't know, okay?
It's just the
I know that one.
Yeah, so Barrick is, Barrick-Hemble has purchased fire protection from uh Marathon Emergency Services Department for surface buildings at the mine for the last thirty years. Uh to date, uh we've only responded to a total of two calls and essentially been on standby. The current agreement requires that the fire department visit the mine site at the invitation of their fire training coordinator. Uh the contract price will be six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for a three-year term. And the current agreement expired on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the new agreement will cover the period uh today uh to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh so financially, the the agreement will generate just over six thousand dollars in revenue. Uh and council's options are approve the bylaw in agreement as presented or do not approve the bylaw in agreement. And your administration recommends that option A be selected and that bylaw number twenty seventy be approved as presented.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Uh so the motion that councillor hereby accepts the tax report and recommendation on fire protection agreement with Barrick-Hemble. And further that the appropriate bylaw be adopted, entering into a fire protection agreement with Barrick-Hemble. Move by. Second. Do you have any questions? To our knowledge, does Barrick have any agreement with White River Fire or Manwash Fire or just mostly just the?
Uh they never mentioned any.
Traditionally, it's just Marathon.
Okay, yeah. All right. All in favor?
All right.
All righty. Next, we have a check run. So I have a motion to approve the check runs uh for December twenty twenty-three, be approved for payment. We have accounts payable of one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and seven cents. Payroll two hundred thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven thou- uh two hundred, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, ninety-four cents. Move by. Seconded, we have all in favor?
All right.
All right. Next, we have some bylaws. So I have a motion to approve bylaw number twenty sixty-eight. Being a bylaw to provide for an interim tax levy for the year twenty twenty-third be read first, second and third time and finally passed this twenty-ninth day of January twenty twenty-four. Move by. And seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
All right.
And next, the bylaw. A bylaw number twenty sixty-nine being a bylaw to establish water rates and provide for the billing and collection of these charges for the year twenty twenty-four be read a first, second and third time and finally pass this twenty-ninth day of January twenty twenty-four. Move by. Councillor Blake, seconded by councillor Wheeler. Any questions? Favor?
Bye.
Trucking here. The motion that bylaw number twenty seventy being a bylaw to authorize a fire protection agreement between the town of Marathon and Barrick-Hemble be read a first, second and third time and finally pass this twenty-ninth day of January twenty twenty-four. Move by. Any questions? All in favor?
All right.
And next, we have bylaw the number, the bylaw number twenty seventy-one being a bylaw to amend bylaw number twenty sixty-five being a bylaw to authorize the establishment of fees and charges for the town of Marathon for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four be read a first, second and third time and finally pass this twenty-ninth day of January twenty twenty-four. Move by. Councillor Blake, seconded by councillor Wheeler. Any questions? All in favor?
All right.
And not the last one, that by bylaw number twenty seventy-two being a bylaw to amend bylaw nineteen forty-three being a bylaw to establish a municipal accommodation tax within the boundaries of the town of Marathon. And the district of Thunder Bay be read a first, second, third time and finally pass the twenty-ninth day of January twenty twenty-four. Move by. Councillor Blake, seconded by councillor Wheeler. Any questions? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Moving on here. Next, we have new business. So we have received a letter from the township of Thunder Bay, or sorry, the township of White River. We're going to AV Terrace Bay shutdown. We've had a copy sent to all of us. Essentially, just how that, the the Terrace Bay mill being shut down, how it's affected White River's operations since they received a lot of the the product from White River and how it's having a ripple effect throughout our communities, affecting restaurants, suppliers, accommodations, different uh different businesses and entities throughout the the whole region. Anyone have anything to add on that? Yeah, I I know, and maybe this is a question particularly for our CAO is out of the last mill shutdown here in Marathon, um I thought the positive thing, I mean positive things, but the creation of the NMFC came out of that, that the mills owned the forest and those clothes, of course, was still with them. You you were instrumental in getting that that fixed. Is there, is there some, like, we're all so resource-dependent, lots of these little towns in the in the northwest. Is there some other structure that you see moving forward, like a, like a, like a force corporation uh that would assist towns in that transition? I just think we're very vulnerable, obviously. Uh you know, if Barrick were to close tomorrow and the new mine doesn't open, we're in the same position as White River, as Terrace Bay is. Like, are there any other structures that you see uh that we could be advocating for that might like cushion?
Yeah, it's, that's a great question. It's really, you know, it's a really challenging one to to answer. You know, I I think, you know, I I look at, you know, our success that has come out of, you know, at the time, you know, we're to the, you know, a devastating loss to the community. You know, and and you know, really, I I think, you know, it takes a lot of fortitude and you have to take a, you know, a bit of a risk-taking mentality. You know, I look at, you know, what we're doing to diversify our economy like the Florida authority, right? Working with our First Nation neighbors in Bittergong. You know, really being aggressive about having an an economic development program and and, you know, landmarks to council over the last, you know, fifteen years, investing in that, right? To to do things like a municipal accommodation tax, right? Not only having one, but you know, increasing it to six percent so we can reinvest in Not only having one, but, you know, increasing it to six percent, so we can reinvest in other things, like, you know, like council was delivering today in budget. You know, with some of our local tourism focus groups. So, you know, I, I don't think there's any one magic solution to it. I think it's, you know, you really have to have proper strategic planning and you have to have, you know, a committed council and senior administration. But, you know, I, I think NFMC, you know, is a really good model, right? I, I at least, you know, it ensures, it takes some of the burden, you know, a good example would be traditionally, you know, you know, road maintenance. You know, there's a cost that was partially borne by operator, right? Where now it's, you know, through NFMC and, you know, they have a partnership with, uh, with BN, you know, to look after the caravan industrial world. Right? So I, I think again, it's, it's, you know, for the small communities, it's really challenging. Um, but I think the reality is, is, you know, when, you know, these large industry players that are driven by, you know, the global commodity market, you always have to have it in the back of your head that, you know, you need to have a solid plan in place. And we're no different, you know, we're very fortunate that, you know, we've had a longstanding partner in Barrick Gold, right? You know, and, and gold is where it's at, right? But it's, you know, we don't ever develop a plan, right, saying, you know, hopefully Barrick stays open forever. I think it's the opposite. Right? Let's diversify our economy, so we're not reliant on one single industry. You know, easier said than done, but I'm going to, you know, honestly, you know, we're a good example of how to do that.
Thank you. That's it. Very, very good question.
Sorry, uh, yeah, good, good summary, uh, Mr. Skorczynski. The reality is, 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 uh, you know, being a resource that's renewable to struggle in today's economy and the world economy with that product not being in such high demand as it was in the past. So I've reached out to both Mayor Malachuski as well as Mayor Mullins. We've talked many times, we, uh, I had an opportunity to speak with, with Mr. Smith, uh, from Minister Natural Resources, talking about the importance, and as we heard from the Roma Conference, each and every minister heard about the, the struggles of Terrace Bay and the impact it had. Not only on the four hundred direct jobs, but probably some twelve hundred indirect jobs throughout the region. So it affects each and every one of our municipalities. It's going right down to the simple thing as a hockey tournament. So if Marathon's having a hockey tournament next weekend and those parents are feeling, feeling the crunch of the dollar that they're not getting from the employment they, they earned at, at AV Terrace Bay, uh, they don't come. So then the tournament's canceled, so it affects hotels, restaurants, the local economy. We experienced that when our mill went down. So we're all there batting for Terrace Bay, and the reality is, the world has changed, and I think as Mr. Skorczynski said, they, uh, hopefully Terrace Bay gets back on track, but they have to look at, how does that mill provide a service, uh, product that's going to be universally needed? And that is the challenge, and man, we need, we all want them to be successful, get that mill back up and running. So we're all there fighting for them through NOMA, Thunder Bay District Municipal League, as well as each individual municipality, so all the power to them and, uh, we're there helping them out in any way we can, but it's a struggle and, uh, you know, the employees are going through a retraining program and all the various things that we did, uh, going through with, uh, the closure of our mill in two thousand nine. But, yeah, it's going to affect all of us in the near future quickly if it doesn't get up and running, so we need to keep pushing and fighting for the mill. Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. All right, so next, anything else, Dan? Wrap it up. Right, so we have a motion here to adjourn at the hour four fifty-three. Move by. Wheeler, Wheeler. Enjoy the pickleball, you worship.
Well, thank you very much, councillor Sughi. You did an excellent job on, uh, chair in the meeting and I really appreciate it, and I will go out now for, uh, dinner and enjoy myself here in the nice, uh, the weather and, uh, Dominican, so thanks for, uh, putting up with me all day, because we, as the public might not be aware, we sat since, uh, twelve o'clock and, uh, we've gone through a budget process as well as council, so thanks a lot and have a good night.
Yes, enjoy.
Thanks.